What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we are with a WSOP ring winner, Mr. Dooley. How are you, Dooley?
Hey, I'm doing great. How about yourself?
Dooley, Dooley, Dooley.
Can't believe that voice comes out of that body.
Dooley.
Look like a fucking lumberjack dude.
Was that, was that an insult or a compliment?
No, he just looks like, he sounds like a very soft smoking, just, I just figured him as like average so long smoking guy. It looks like a lumberjack.
I'll take it. I'll take the compliments where I can get them.
So Dooley, tell us about your experience.
Yeah, so uh, I did not expect this at all for one. Uh, for two, this was on the second bullet, uh, which is saying slightly out of my buy-in range is an understatement. Um, I, I don't remember how I lost, but I lost and I was like, you know what? Screw it. I'm just gonna fire another bullet. Um, I did, it was like 20 or 30 big blinds and um, yeah, it was uh, wasn't necessarily smooth sailing from there. Uh, I definitely ran like a god when I needed to, uh, as, as, I mean, like you definitely need to run good to win a ring, even if it's in Ontario. Uh, now, now it should be noted that like this ring is like in Ontario that so, so the field is a lot smaller and the field is a lot easier. So.
700 people dude, that's a lot, that's a big.
Yeah, still 700 players at $200 event. Let's see how you did. So your first read by hand, pocket queens.
Hello.
Goodbye.
Oh, so wait, 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 do we limp here?
Oh, this was a misclick. This was a misclick. I remember this. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Wait, did you lay right or is this the second bullet?
This is the second bullet.
Okay.
I like the.
Yes, it was 30 big blinds. It wasn't, it wasn't terrible.
As a, as an adjustment there. So like, since you accidentally limped and you get raised, I think jamming over the race is pretty good. So you leave? Is that what happened here? Yeah, this is a good lead. This is a good lead.
For sure.
This is good, yeah.
Bet small. I like.
I would check call here probably, but I think, I think betting small is also good.
I'm piling.
Yeah, I think I pile here.
I mean, he's got some eights unfortunately.
Four liner?
Yeah, but he doesn't have offsuit eight, so I'm piling.
So if I recall correctly, this player was super splashy and he's the guy that busted me. So I, I think I had some like pretty like, like weird hands against him.
So then.
Revenge, but I did jam this, I think.
You had your revenge range.
Nevermind.
Revenge, exactly.
Not a good jam at all. I would at best, I would make it the value bet like maybe 10 big lines, eight big lines.
Are you gonna fold if you raise?
I'm blocked. I'm betting like six or seven again and like getting called by queen, uh, any queen, uh, aces, kings.
So my one issue with uh, the one issue I would have with jamming is like, you're just kind of isolating yourself against better hands usually. Cause what, what can really call? Like, okay, you can get, you can get three to fold maybe like this hand might fold versus jam, but.
You need a read to jam. They need to be like tagged as mega splash.
I think we should see that handed this over.
Yeah, I like to say in the machine honestly. Cause I don't think, I think a block like, are you gonna get a block bet fold?
Like I would, I was thinking checking the turn.
Yes. No. Well, I didn't see the whole hand.
So checking isn't bad, but I think you got a coffee jams, right?
So my rationale for not checking the turn was I gained equity, so I, I just barreled.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, if you check, you gotta call like, that's the whole thing.
Betting small.
I think in that spot, if you're, if you're willing to shove all. If, if you're looking at this, like.
Seems good.
Shove or check, I think checking would be better because he would end up all in with a weaker range than he'd call with.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't, we just don't have a jamming range. It's just bet a lot, bet with everything.
Yeah.
And then the biggest bet was like 13 and then when we bet and he raise.
What's it doing with this one? A block bet?
28%, 28% all in though, right?
We don't call so far. It's a four liner.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So it's a block bet fold.
So basically the solution, this is a good lead. On the turn, you wanna bet smaller here. The, the.
Or larger.
Betting two big lines.
It was betting uh, larger more.
Um, no. On the turn, two big lines.
Right, and then 5.4, 36% of the time.
Yeah, a little bit bigger. Yeah.
But I, I think it's probably fine. It's a merge size.
Is it gonna bet like two big ones of everything on the turn then? Like essentially?
Yeah, can we look at turn range?
Let's see that turn. But that's a really small size and so that makes me think it's just betting loads of stuff because it's a good call for a big blind.
Betting range on the turn.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, that's why we go to.
Is he?
Yeah.
Because we have such an advantage?
Good call. The nature, I think it's just the nature of the run out. When you donk the flop and you get like, what was it? A five that completes a bunch of stuff? I mean, it just, yeah, it just kinda tanks their range and improves ours.
So, and then here we want a black bet to fold. Okay, we lose this one. So this is an all in call. Okay, we dodged a, ooh, had a sweat.
I think I was spamming just one times there.
Okay, here, just the three bet or a call.
Three bet or fold. I'm not calling.
You don't call here ever?
I think, I, I think it's a call, I think.
Don't call here.
I think GTO calls, I think GTO calls mostly.
Yeah.
I think three bets fine, some percentage of the time is a bluff.
No, 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 absolutely. I, I just don't think you fold this pre-flop too.
Do you? Yeah, I was gonna ask if you ever fold here, if they have tight stats or just call usually.
Yeah, I'll fold if they have tight stats.
Me too. Here's where I'm telling that call, cause I'm gonna be in.
It's a 0.2 EP call. Yeah, that's, that's what I feel. Free bet and cool. Yeah.
Yeah. Ken, you said you call if they're tight.
Yeah, because I'm gonna be in position.
Yeah, that's what I would do too.
Oh.
I can't fold ace jack.
Me either.
Dooley. Dooley, are you gonna play jack six?
Hey man, I've been told I should open a lot more hands in the buttons.
I love the.
Jack seven is my line here.
Jack seven's mixing, yeah, the offsuit eights.
You got shown the newspaper here.
The news, the newspaper. Bad dog.
Uh, we pull from the low wheels for bluffs here ever? I don't think you can send under a gun, you do.
Oh my goodness. Okay, so maybe we don't always have to go all in here, right?
Yes, we do.
This is your four bet shove.
There's so much dead money in there. It's so juicy.
Yeah, but this time it's different because this guy here is limp calling six bigs.
He's limp calling, he's not limp raising.
Feels fishy, right? I don't know. I think, I think as long as you don't fold here.
Out of position, I would always stuff it in his face, but against.
And he's gonna, and this guy's gonna call off with a pair of sixes and.
Why does the limper make you want to, to not jam?
Because who knows what he's up to? He's still EP.
Cause he's gonna call off with a pair of sixes because he's a calling station.
When he limp calls like, then the, you're either doing a fish or like, I mean, the fish either way, but a tricky limper or a normal limper. When he just.
When he does that, he scares me. I know he's a monster. I know he's up to no good.
With black aces.
No, I think it's the other way. I, I think he's always calling with his pair of sixes because he's can't fold because he's a bad player and you're just bluffing a bad player. That's what I think.
You made it two X, did you miss the limp?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely.
That's annoying, right?
It just happens a lot to me when I'm multi-tape.
Do we also use the?
Have you said sixes? It was sevens.
Yep.
Well, okay, I'm a little off.
My, my problem with the four bet is you have to get through two players.
I think there was.
I think I forgot that jammed.
I think there was a question about low suited something or another that we were kinda glizzing over. What was the?
Oh, I was just gonna ask if we use them for cold four bet spots as well. For like, if it goes like raise, call, squeeze, and we have like 40 bigs with ace five suited, are we all in?
No.
It depends.
Ever.
I think.
Or we prefer like ace queen off there.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't think ace queen's good because like you're blocking folds at that point. Like, I, I mean, if you're gonna have a four bet jam bluff, ace five's not a bad candidate, but I use with caution.
I've seen a solid pull from like.
Yesterday, I ran into kings.
I've seen a solid pull with like suited kings in that situation as well. Like king, jack suited.
Okay.
Makes sense. Alright, sorry.
Here, I, I like an all in.
All ends probably, all ends probably good here for sure.
Falling is a bit.
That's a stacked dip, I like all in.
The hand before we saw it was up to no good. He went with the three bet with the A's four before.
Just don't fold is the big thing.
I'm, I'm always shoving unless it's the biggest name in the world.
Is this more of a raise or a call? It's fine, dude.
I think call is fine. I, I don't hate raising, but.
I'm raising with the queen or ace of hearts.
I'm raising due to the sizing. He bet like, what? A fifth pot, a six, a six pot?
Yeah, it was very small.
I'd call more if I had a heart. That race small here.
Here, look at this.
If he had bet a third, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, it's pure raising.
Yeah, the thing is, when, say we have ace nine, it would be just a call. Like it's a SPR thing, right? Low SPR, top pair, top kicker, we almost always get it in right here or try to.
So the question I do have, if this guy is a blaster, like, and like this guy's a little out of line, would you prefer a strategy maybe to let him have a little more rope?
Yeah, but the problem here is he's clearly showing you that he's not gonna blast this one.
Probably not, right? Like 2.5 is super small.
Yeah, he's showing you.
What the geo size?
Take his normal line. He's not, this is not a blaster line. He's, he's, he's spot controlling, he's betting a nine or he's range betting very small.
I mean, on the turn, no, on the turn, there's gonna be 19 in there. We'll have 21 behind. Like, he can go small, small, small or like.
Reason why I don't like just calling here is without a heart is like he could, if we call this, he's setting a great price to buy to the river. Cause we're gonna check turn and he's gonna get to realize, oh, is that really cheap? I agree. I think the raise is the play here.
I think it's because we're out of position as well. If we were in position, say small blind free bet or somewhere cut off, I think we did, we called because we're in position. I think our position makes a big difference. So you wanna raise.
Yep.
Can we see our, um, what we bluff raise on this?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I was gonna say like, well, like if you wanna ever bluff here, you have to raise this hand.
Right.
I'm, I'm gonna raise like jack ten suited, uh, not with the hearts at some frequency, low pocket pairs at some frequency.
Yeah, there's also gonna be a lot of turn cards that complete the equity for the straight draw or the flush draw. So our ace just wants to get it in while we're ahead here.
Correct. I like that.
So you see here, uh, your bluffs come from your low pocket pairs and then like your uh, straight draws.
All hearts?
Pocket eights.
Eight nine, pure raises by the way, LP. Eight nine and eight seven right away. Yeah, I think it's the draws on the board is the reason like uh, as I said, you wanna, you wanna get this in now rather than wait for a bad card on the turn, which will freeze the action and you don't get your money in.
With jack ten and ten eight, where's it pulling from?
Hearts. Front door, back door.
Hearts and diamonds mainly.
So yeah.
Pocket eights. Alright, I would never find pocket eights here.
Checky.
Yeah, I should have went for value.
How do you structure your range after that turn goes check, check?
Well, I know he's pretty capped when he does that, um, and both flush draws break. Uh, how do I structure my range? I mean,
In my mind.
Blasting a lot.
All in or, or check?
I don't think he has a lot of flush draws here. I think you got more flush draws than he does here.
I'm betting like two thirds here, 75%.
That's like the same as all in.
To be honest, um, I don't hate jamming. I don't hate jamming just because all the flush draws miss. Like he's gonna have kings and queens and stuff that might bluff catch you here.
Worse ace. I don't, yeah, I don't. Bet though, right?
Well, like ace four suited should be checking back the turn.
Yeah.
So yeah, value bet here, mandatory, I think. What do you guys say? Value bet?
I agree, I agree. I would bet, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Your bet.
Yeah.
I'd probably jam to be honest.
We probably not jamming because I don't think we have enough value and we have a lot of bluff still.
Doesn't that argue for jamming?
Yeah, but it's very easy to like over bluff.
Yeah, well, that's, that's on us to do it correctly, right?
See, it's not, I mean, three aces on the.
Right, you're right.
It's weird. It's going 15.5, we have 20 big blinds. I can see leaving four and a half bigs behind. So this sim isn't probably exactly is our tip stacks.
Yeah, it says all in for 22.
Okay, yeah, it's weird.
I mean, it's, it's due to just the nature of like, we're, we, we both have capped ranges due to the action. It was bet small on the flop, call, check, check, and then like ranges just aren't strong. You're not really gonna have jams.
Yeah, but in the real world, I'm thinking if he's calling 20 or 15, he's calling 20, right? And I think you wanna get. My mind, my brain doesn't work to leave six big lines behind. I just don't understand it. Me too.
But it, it keeps you in the tournament when you're bluffing.
Well, I wanna rebuy. I don't, I don't want five big blinds.
What if, what if you're in the money already or you know, like?
Well, that's different, but we're not.
Okay. I love it. It's funny.
Uh, why 2.4?
That's terrible size.
Yep. I know, I know.
I'm fine with the raise, but you need raise larger.
Why would you bet here?
I like a check. Queen, queen three and queen two are queens with the card beneath the board, I think are our best checks.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
I'm always betting every queen here.
Then whenever you check your, your range is extremely capped.
I never check.
I mean, if your opponent's very straightforward, then, then just bet maybe.
It's a limp pre-flop.
Well, of course.
No, he raised. It's a limp fold actually, right?
Yeah.
But, I mean, you gotta have a polar strategy. So it's not like terrible, whatever.
Yeah, it's pre more pull in from like king six, five, king four.
It's like, yeah, it's like a pip too low. It's gonna be like queen five, queen six, queen seven or something. Or queen four, queen five, queen six.
I was, um, so just to kinda help out with this, I was talking with Bill, Bill about this strategy last night. And you want the face card that unblocks the folds. So like you're targeting his offsuit fives, offsuit fours, offsuit threes, offsuit deuces. So the ones that raise are usually like a pip above those.
Uh, it's your way to look at it.
Yeah, I never really, that, that kinda clicked with me last night at least.
It's like uh, kind of a staircase, so like.
Can you repeat?
You said you don't wanna raise. Yeah, go for it.
Well, so like, so just look at the folding range real quick or that. So like when you raise, what are they folding?
When you see that, you mean?
No, 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 no.
Pre-flop, pre-flop. So like, look at, you raised, what's their call range? What are they folding? They're folding threes, deuces, fours, fives, sixes, a little bit less. So we're gonna be raising the face cards that unblock the folds more than the ones that do block the fold. So you don't wanna deuce, you don't wanna three, you wanna four a little bit less, you wanna five a little bit more, and it kinda goes up from there.
So you don't wanna bluff.
On the offsuit side.
So that makes sense. Their falls come from here. So you don't have any of these kind of cards. So you're gonna bluff from here.
Yeah, that's, that's typically what I was seeing last night with Bill.
Yeah, it makes sense.
That's a good observation.
Looks like perfectly aligned. Like everything they fold is everything we limp.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on the flop, uh, we are mixing. We can bet, you can check, okay, fine. Turn, do you go with a bit, uh, big bet here?
I like it. I like it.
I, I do too.
Four is bad. You gotta check.
Betting large again.
We have, we have a 10 kicker now.
To be honest, I don't hate a bet. Like you unblock hearts, he's gonna have six, seven. I think this might be a little too big unless you're.
Yeah, this is very, very large.
I would have went like.
I go like, I go like.
Five and a 10, right?
Well, that's the challenge, right? Like, is he gonna call a 10 versus a pot size bet here? Like, I would go like half pot this 60, 70 percent.
When the four bears and you're against a big lines, it's not a spot where you're gonna polarize, I think.
Could you even go third here? Like?
Yeah.
You're missing value, I think you might be.
I'll spot maybe.
Yeah, I go around half pot. I like, I like half pot because you're getting value from tens and fives and then if he has a four, goes all in, you can fold.
I think the question is, how much is he gonna pay you with a 10?
Well, I promise you, I'm paying the pot size bet if I have a 10. So.
How are you approaching this? Uh, how are you approaching this spot, Nick?
Uh, I'm mixing between block bet small and betting like two thirds. I think we, it's very, we wanna have bluffs here is how I always look at these spots. So we have to bet large with some of our value hands. We're not gonna have a lot of four X, so we have to pull from our queen X. But we will have better queen X. So because of that, I probably lean towards betting small with this hand, but I will have big bets with it too.
So it wants to go like, it wants to go to two third pot, 21 and 232. So here that would be two thirds, eight.
Yeah.
Eight big lines. Alright.
Yeah, it seems reasonable, right?
Ah, Dooley.
I'm checking here. Yeah, I think you gotta just chuck call.
Yeah, definitely a check.
Yeah, it's a check.
Absolute. It's a peer check. We're checking a ton here. And when we're betting, I think we're polarizing. We don't bet small.
This is a bet?
I think so.
I'm betting. Three ways.
I don't, I don't like betting this three ways because I think the small blind has a, some aces still and.
Dicey. I, I don't hate betting, but it's dicey.
Yeah, I think about it. Multi-way pots, yeah.
Well, I think about it as if, if I was against a small blind, I'm barreling ace high flops, checking more king high flops and.
I, I think it shouldn't be the other way around.
I, no, I think king high flops are, yeah, I, I don't think you're barreling ace high flops versus small blind there.
I didn't, uh, I didn't catch what Ken was saying. He was mid-sentence.
I thought we had looked at this before a while back and I thought ace high flops were better for the imposition player versus the small blind.
I think Joey's right.
Might just fetish please? King high flops are a little worse, so I would target the small blind. He's in the middle. He's gonna be, he, he can't float too wide with the big blind behind him, especially on this sort of flop with the wheel draws and all there. So he's gonna give you a really honest response. So that's why I like that. Now we got a club.
Yeah, I like betting with the club.
I think it's the other way around. We, we check more on ace high flops and bet more on king high.
I think that's right.
LP, do you have notes on this? I appreciate.
Small blind is three betting, a lot of his good um, aces, right? So I kind of agree that ace high board.
We'll look it up after.
Queen high's the worst, right?
Uh, anything middle like 10, 10, jack, queen are all bad against small blind.
Is this a good three bet?
Deuce high's the worst.
Deuce high's the worst.
See. Yeah, I mean, like, see, I, I think I was thinking in my head, I'm like, oh, I remember what Louis said. Having a nine against bad position is bad. Uh, or against late position is bad.
Are you, are you near ICM here?
Right now. Hmm, I think, I think we're like closing in on bubble.
I doubt, this is a big industry we were at the beginning. And 15, we got over 100 hands.
Honestly, this is probably, uh, this, this is probably not a bad area to pull from, like.
Ooh.
Yeah, it's just a call, yeah.
You went with the three bet. It's not a thing. Happy days.
What was that effective? What was that effective though? How many biggies effective?
I don't hate it.
Thirty, thirty-ish.
Forty.
The problem is you, you have two cards that block the bottom of their range.
Hmm. No, it was.
So.
The bottom of the buttons range?
It's a cutoff.
Oh.
You're not gonna pull from your nines because you want him to have a nine.
I thought it was button.
So it might be bad, but I like.
This is, this is the spot where you use the Lewis.
Hey, let's hear, uh, the Lewis. Hey, uh, Dooley, tell us your thoughts on this spot.
Yeah, so, so sometimes I will expand my three betting range based on the attempt to steal from the other players. So if I see someone is getting out of line, like just stealing a lot, um, I will, I will expand and, and do stuff like this, but it kinda sucks that, wait, what? We have a, we have a HUD? I thought, I thought RGG, you don't get a HUD.
You don't.
It's so we can see when you're lying or not.
So Dooley, this guy's in it.
So Dooley, when you import the hands to P24, your P24 HUD will convert the hand history onto your HUD.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Are you guys finding the jacton suited jam here?
To be honest though, Dooley, I like what you're saying. Um, being adaptive to your situation and adjusting to your opponents, I think is very good.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Uh, jacton off, queen ten off, ace nine off, ace eight off. These are good candidates.
Yeah, the suited tens are good because you can get folds from the suit jacks and you have good equity when you're cooled.
A little bit of pocket kings?
It feels bad running.
Just a call?
Peer call.
Peer call.
Peer call.
And, and no one is ever three betting here.
No.
Louis, Louis, what options?
Bowler here, right?
Well, hold on.
Three bet is 10, he's 9.
What options do you have to three bet here other than jamming?
Ken, that's small blind.
Probably fine, right? But I, I thought it was just 10% jamming here and then mostly a three bet small.
I would just call here personally. I.
It does two bets small. 20%.
Ken, that small blind spot we were talking about earlier, do you remember the depth? Was it like 35?
Hmm, I don't. Yeah, it was like 35, 40, something like that.
Is this better?
Yeah, I think it was like 40ish.
Big bet. We got a pretty good ace. This is our best.
We have to call once.
Yeah. Oh, Dooley.
I'm a nit.
I think you gotta call once because this is the best tasty flat call, right?
You got ace queen too, but yeah.
Again, I, I, I am, I'm pretty sure we are approaching like, like less than 20% of the field. So like even 15% of the field. So I am playing a little bit more nitty.
That's fine.
What kind of raise size is this, Dooley?
See, with this.
Listen, man, I just click buttons.
This inflates the plot out of position and you have zero fold equity when you do this.
Yeah.
Like he's never folding anything.
Limp jamming theory?
Oh, yeah, I think that's fun.
He has a suited five, I'm pretty sure. This is, this is in the money, I think. This is like 100 people left.
You would tilt the fuck out of me.
Right out of the Louis Flee playbook, right out of the Louis playbook.
Uh.
Rather bluff catch this, I think, than that one.
Alright, so I have a question here, Dooley. If you raise, you get jam.
Good day, everyone.
Howdy. No, I was gonna say with the fives. I mean, this, this hand's kinda whatever.
Alright, so how often do you guys jam here? Pre-flop? Is that a good play?
30, 30, I don't think. Not a 30 big blinds.
That's 20 big ones.
What kind of bet do you need there to jam?
What's that?
15.
I mean, you're gonna have like a little, little bit of jamming.
I think 20 jams, some and 15 obviously jammed.
Are we still limp jamming at 20?
I'm jamming the bottom of my, my worst ace off suits at 20. Stace, doace, ace three, ace four, ace five, I think, isn't it? Ace five, I don't really jam. I just do like ace three, ace four, I think it is. Yeah.
Yeah, 20, you're gonna have some.
How about king three?
I would open jam like ace seven. I would open jam like ace seven. Maybe that's.
You wanna open jam?
I think that's the ones you don't wanna jam in the middle.
Look at this.
Hey.
Yeah, you're right. You're right, hey.
So five big lines.
Ace five, yeah.
Alright. So jamming here when you're twenty five is okay. Now the rest is just, um, I would check, uh, that one here is fine. I would check because you got shown out and. I wouldn't bet fire again. So here duly, uh. Do you remember this, Sam?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so why do you squeeze here? The five big line with your pocket fives?
Well, it's not squeezed. It's, it's, it's over a limper.
Yeah.
I would call or jam. I would, I would just see a flop or jam. I got, depends what I think of the limper.
Are you guys squeezing here with the, the flowers? Cause I'm just limping.
All, all you're doing when you bet five against, uh, I think, is this the same guy that called the cold, the cold call? I don't know.
If this dude's limping a ton, I jam. If he's all of a sudden limping, I'm gonna think he's being tricky that I just call.
I think you're value betting. I think you're value betting yourself when he's got sixes or sevens there. That's what I think.
Well, now that we all have our thoughts out of the way. Dooly, what, what, what is your plan with this hand? Okay, like if you raise and he jams, what do you, what, what are you doing?
Fold, man. I, I can't, I can't call.
Okay, so when you think about it that way, um. What, what do you think? Like, would you play it the same way again?
What do you think is the most profitable way to play this hand?
I, I'll tell you how I played. I, 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 um. I think like jamming's a viable option, but it's high variance. I personally just limp this. You know? Low risk, you know, you're gonna see a flop a lot if you, and it's pretty easy to play and navigate post flop like, you know.
Yeah, and if you want to bluff. If you wanna raise bluff, I think you wanna use blockers, right? Like gambling, like some bad kings or aces, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, like blocker hands would be probably really good. I mean, it really depends on the limper, I would think.
So the, the way I see this is very, it, what's the best thing that can happen here? We hit the five.
He folds.
If we get, no, if we hit the five. Uh, then do we have, do we want to be heads up if we hit the five? Or do we want to have as many people as possible in the hand? Simple as that.
As many people.
Wanna hit the five and if we hit it, we want to play against as many people as possible. So for me, it's always gonna be a limit.
I agree, Louis. I think limping's gonna be definitely a. Probably the, probably the play.
Yeah, now we're just building on a disaster.
Well, so this is, yeah, this is problematic. He lamps, he's gonna have like, you're, you're kind of flying in the dark. He calls your bet, so you can. Definitely narrow his range down to value to some extent. So.
He raised.
Yeah, that's just an easy fold, but.
So did he, so did he raise pre flop, Joey?
No.
That's what it is.
But. But the lit, there are a lot of lippers that will limp call the whole range.
Exactly.
Yeah, I would see that there if I played it that way.
Yeah, little high king five suited that they wanna see a cheap flop, but still call.
Call, call. Alright, what do they have? Holy moly, Macca, oh, everyone.
Easy liar.
Got a faded spade too.
What a sweat.
Oh, we did it and they just checked it down. Pretty weird. Alright.
I had the spot the other day with aces, aces against ace king against ace king. It's like, wow. That's my one for the year.
Hmm. I, uh, man.
Um.
Guy raised.
You gotta call.
I wouldn't raise.
It, it's kind of a large bet. I don't know if you have, have the equity, just call.
Yeah, well, I think, oh, you gotta got shut. You can't fold like that shut with a back door with like over cards to the four. So you just call.
Oh, I'm not saying to fold.
Yeah.
I was thinking more raise instead of call because of it, you weren't getting a great price to call.
Now he bets big kind of, he's polarizing a little bit. I would definitely raise here.
I think the guy to my left is a blaster, if I recall correctly. He's the same guy played, uh, the king, the ace four suited or the ace four offsuit.
Hmm.
Okay, so do you say it's better to let him blast?
Yes.
I would always raise here.
Well, he won't fold an ace with a pair or like a diamond draw very, right? Like. A nine, like what's he gonna fold?
It's time to scam a nine here. Something like that. I would just put it in.
I like checking personally.
All in here.
I think we should have raised turn bigger so that we could have a better size here for all in.
The problem is we don't check raise flop. So what, how many nines do we really have, right? So we check raise turn. Are we saying we have a nine on the turn now? Like.
Nine, five.
It's kind of a, that's what I'm saying. It's like, we didn't take a, a aggression the whole way. So.
Somehow max value of the river. I don't think you can get more value than the way we play this game.
Well, we could have raised turn bigger. We just clicked it.
Oh, yeah, raising turn. I was gonna.
If you make it like eleven or twelve.
I think it's like something here, no? Alright, alright, limp.
So now I get his big bet on the flop. It was like a please fold bet.
Uh, would have bet turn.
Wait. What happened there?
Flop and check, I'm gonna bet the turn. I got it over flush draw. Ten high, I would have bet turn.
Do you think there's merit in falling or raising here?
I would have led turn, it, flop and check, check. So I just would have bet turn myself.
I think you have some raises here.
I think so too.
Folding just. I don't know.
Yeah, it's probably not.
You have a ten that blocks some nines.
We have a flush draw.
And a flush draw.
But I agree with Ken. I would just always stab the turn. So we don't have to.
Yeah, I think, I think betting the turn.
Yeah, definitely has some raises there.
Yeah, raising every time.
If we check, we check raise.
Yeah, never checks though. That's the thing. Six percent check, right?
Right.
Yeah, so definitely here duly you can raise. Like very often when I card pair and you have the upper dangler to the card and then extra equity like a. Backdoor flush, for example. So very good spot for it. You have the ace of heart, jack eye board. Very great. So I think it's a bad small.
I think so. I like it.
Why polarize here, Dooley?
Uh, I just thought I had the ace of hearts. So I'm like, okay. I'll just, I'll just get him to fold something.
Okay, is this a good card to double barrel?
No.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a horrible card to double barrel.
This is definitely a key friend position here. We need to double barrel.
And this is why it's nice to go small on the flop too. Cause then you get a card you wanna barrel on. You get to polarize and it's not costing you as much. You can still be poor.
And then you could have tripled that turn.
Exactly. You could have tripled.
I. Yeah, I agree with Ken.
Now you still go for it.
We still rep some flushes here that'll.
Check that.
It's for hearts or.
So, hey, Dooly, what, what did you do on the turn? Did you check here?
Yeah, check back.
Yeah.
I just checked it back.
I don't, I don't, I don't honestly like, I think you do need to bet this when you have the ace of hearts here. You, um, you do have some flushes that do bed check bet. Probably even more when you take a larger bet on the flop.
Yeah, the only mistake is to check turn, I think. I think we need to barrel turn, barrel river.
You could look at it. You might wanna look at it like, um, I think, I think he will have some flushes that do bet check bet sometimes. Especially when there's a double flush draw that hits, I think. I don't know. I could be wrong.
It'll depend on the flush card, right? Like a high card will probably keep out. Well, cause we're on a bluff. So like, but a card that hits his range better will probably wanna check and realize more.
Zero percent.
Never checks.
Queen on the turn, that's what I've been saying.
Yeah.
Okay. How much, how much is it betting? Sir, I just didn't see. How much is it betting on the turn?
Uh, seven.
Or ten?
Yeah, you're blasting.
Seven or ten of the twelve, okay.
Can we look at his flop bet size too?
I give up.
Uh, it would be small. I don't like the big bet.
Yeah, it's more, okay. And I thought it was, I just wanted to check.
And I reverse not available.
I'm taking after you. I'm a sliver warrior now.
Alright, we got this one. I can jacks. This is just a spot where I go all in.
Yeah, just run it. He's got twenty two total.
I call.
Falling is greater.
I call.
Why do you call here?
Cause when you four bet and they jam, you're not, you're getting called by queens. Uh, ace, king, maybe tens, like.
All in. You can jam it. He only has sixteen left.
Yeah, this is. Who has sixteen left?
We got a little.
Three better.
The three better.
He's got fifty five bigs.
No.
No.
You're.
Look at the cards.
I'm sorry. I thought it was the guy to his, I thought it was the guy with fifty some bigs.
No, it was the guy, he started to ham with twenty two bigs. I would. Four bet shove that all day.
All in.
Yep, just.
Check, um, this is a spot where we need to bet.
Do we triple here?
Hmm, probably not because if we get called, we don't pick up it. I don't see how we're gonna pick up equity here.
Yeah, but don't you bluff some no equity stuff in position?
King or a jack on the turn. I think it's a one and done kind of spot. What kind of side?
Solver likes the baby aces to triple sometimes, no? Little pairs, little aces.
Yeah.
Unblocking all their.
Look at this PR.
Well, it depends, it depends on the run out.
So I don't.
You go like third half, half.
You can't say on the.
I mean, yeah, it depends on the run out. That's of course.
Yeah, you need to pick up equity on that turn and then you wanna have extra equity here as well. So if the six was a four, the, one of them was a spade.
I don't know.
Maybe.
Can we look?
So first.
Yeah, I think I agree with Louis here.
You wanna bet small on the flop? You have some big bet because it's too broadways.
Think it might be one of those.
Then on the turn, look at this, you, you, the king, I think is one of the best turns for imposition.
Yeah, the king is one of the cards you wanna keep going with.
Yeah.
Add it again.
Hmm. Oh, it's a triple. Look at that.
Yeah, you seem to be very amazed by like very simple hands very often. It's not a big.
What do you mean? I'm the only one who said triple.
Yeah, fantastic.
I, I gotta be honest, I would have tripled with all three of the other suited combos there. So if the six was a four or like a five or lower, where you could turn the wheel at two. So I'm not finding this on the king ten, the queen ten six.
Yeah, I think the, barreling the turn on the king is really good, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you pick up equity and it's a really good card for your raising.
Yeah, so you're barreling every one of them. And then on the river.
Yeah, we should look at different rivers. I'm curious what it will do across different.
Well, actually we can just, when we did go to a river, we could just look at a report. And it'll tell us what's the, we're betting what cards we're checking.
So the baby aces, it likes. Solver special. No equity triple. I mean, we did, you're right. We did pick up the straight draw.
Ah, hang on, hang on. So see here, it's only going with hearts.
Hmm.
We don't, we only, only arts pick up on the turn equity. So do we not double barrel this on the turn with the spade? We are double barreling the, the spade. Ah, it's because we are checking back on this line. Okay.
Oh.
So king shows up, it definitely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's.
Cause it's.
Stopper's not showing a triple barrel. It's showing, we should have bet the turn.
Yeah.
But when we check the turn, we should bet the river.
So we don't get to bet a lot of turns. That's what we're seeing here, right?
Uh, we bet a bunch of turns, like if you see here, the checking range. Uh, my mind.
Oh, I see.
That's her. It's my journey.
But ace and king are the best terms for us to barrel.
Ace and king, we bet small. Everything else we bet big. That's what it's saying, right?
Yeah.
But more polar. Yeah, okay.
Like if this was the nine of clubs, I don't think we double barrel on the turn.
And then question number two, if you bet big on the flop. Okay, no, yeah. If you bet big on the flop, you are double barreling big here. On. I mean, ace, king, we bet small. Ten, I bet small.
Ace, king are the two cards where we wanna do it mostly with our range.
It's just one of those things where.
So I understand why we barrel a king so much. If it was an ace, I would understand. A jack, I would understand. But why is it barreling so much on like? For example.
Switch the cards, make the nine of clubs the turn.
Five of, five of diamonds. Alright, this is what I don't get is why?
I think we can still back into an ace that will win the pot sometimes. So it likes using, and we block some.
We have to.
Their better ace, queen, ace ten, we block some of that and we don't, we unblock all of their straight draws and. Like the deuce doesn't interact. So like they can have nine, eight on the flop that might fold turn. They can have. You know, jack eight, stuff like that. Or that we're even ahead of and might call again.
Hmm, they don't have ace, king. They don't have ace, queen. They don't have tens while we have all of them.
Right. So it's like you pull bluffs from somewhere. And all of our like under pairs. Don't have as, uh, as much. Ability to improve as the asex.
Alright, so long story short, bet flop, bet turn, blast off on the river. And then pray for.
Actually, Louis, we didn't, we didn't see that. Cause you gotta go back and. Put the king of hearts back on the turn.
Uh, hang on, is there a better?
We saw it in the, um. When we were looking at this actual hand.
No, it.
On the sidebar thing.
It bet the river. Yeah, it bet the river after we checked the turn.
Okay.
It was triple barrel.
But no, Louis.
But that's assuming we.
Give us a bet on the turn and see if it still barrels the river.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we didn't bet the turn like we should have.
So would have been small.
Let's say we bet four.
I'm not saying it's not both. I'm just saying we don't know that for certain yet.
We're still going.
Just blasting.
Okay.
But all suits.
Yeah, good point, Joey. Now we know. This is one of those ones that I don't really find, even though I know it's often a thing.
Three key cards for imposition. So maybe that's interesting. Make a note on that.
Yeah, and these like straights flops with. Too broadways, I think it tends to be. Liking these baby asex.
Okay, so we lost to a queen. Not sure if a queen was folding. Probably. Alright.
I think if I triple barrel, then blast it off, you will fold it.
Just all in. It's good. Nine, six, what are you gonna do here, Dooley?
Go in.
I think it's four. We need to raise. What do you guys say? Pretty effective. Nine, six off. I'm always raising. Pretty effective, nine six off, I'm always raising.
Nevermind.
Limping and folding.
I know, as he gets shorter and shorter, we start limping more and more, cause we don't want him to be able to shove over our race as much.
Oh, the mystery, the mystery bounties and.
Yeah, is this the part where the bounties start to kicking?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
What, what is the mystery bounty exactly?
So ten K, so one ten K, uh, one five point four K, two three Ks, uh. Two one, or three one point nine Ks, and then the min bounties are nine hundred, four eighty and two sixty.
Duly, I don't think he knows how it works, what, so like more generically, um, Joey is. It's a bounty tournament, but you don't know what everyone's bounty equates to, so. There's a jackpot mechanism, so like what duly saying is this guy with three point six six could have ten thousand dollars on his head.
Okay. And that, it, so it doesn't matter what his actual bounty is.
You don't know what it is.
The, what matters really is that you keep track on whether or not the big chests are, are, are gone or not. Cause I, as soon as the big chests are gone, your chest value goes down by a lot.
Oh, okay.
You need to keep track of whether the big chests or not are, are still there.
Right.
At the end, usually it's almost like pure chip PV, cause the bounties are so small, like the bounty power doesn't add up anymore.
Yeah, once, once the big jackpots are gone.
Yeah, in general, as soon as you can get your hand on a bounty, you wanna play extremely aggressively, cause. The bounty power is too high when the big chests are available.
It makes sense, okay.
Yeah, so, so we went hunting, uh, a couple of times, but then we lost a bit of our stack, we lost like twenty or thirty big blinds. When we went like a little bit out of line, and uh, the big bounties were just like not in play anymore, so I just, I just kinda went back to playing normally.
This is a.
Like this, yeah.
Why, if it's like a PKO, I probably never take, and if it's a bounty. Mystery bounty, you probably need to gamble here. Yeah. Oh, okay, we missed. Uh, is this a better limp or you just shove it fine?
You know, like. So the charts will tell you like this is a really good limp brain, limp hand to like protect the lamps, but I think if there's. If there's bounties in play, I wonder if it just becomes a better jam.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. I like the jam.
Uh, is this a big bad spot?
Nine high, two tone, I mean, y- you can have some big bets here with two overs and the flow straw.
I like the two, I like the two big one, but.
Uh, I don't think it's a spot where you have a lot of bad smiles. Think we're very polar here.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be a texture that leans itself polar, I would think too, you know.
Yeah, so definitely polar size, we bet, we like to bet five here, and then. Check.
Because with the mystery bounty, shouldn't the big blind be calling you off wider, cause he's expecting you to shove wider?
I don't think so. Okay, so it's more of a big death here. King ten of clubs, it's always big betting. Uh, very polar strategy, there's a, some small bets, but in general, ace nine, pocket tens, jack screens. So it's a big death board. Thing is, when you bet small here against a good rag is gonna make your life tough, because. These kinda texture, when you know it's a big, big spot, and when you know the guy's range betting. You can really exploit by check raising a lot here.
Right. Uh, this is a hand that's not gonna struggle against.
So turn is a break, I don't fault you for not barreling. A river, uh, it hits his range, right? You don't really wanna mess here, so it's probably fine.
Yeah, it's a one liner and, yeah.
Yeah, I like it, you'll, you'll be in a lot of flustered on the turn anyway, so you can check behind.
Check, check, I don't mind it. Fault to the big turn bet, that's fine. Open ace nine, a little bit frisky.
It's the, these are in play and there's all these shorties.
Look, look at the big blind.
This is definitely a good open with the big one only having like eight.
Yeah, okay, it, it's not on the charts, but I can't disagree with the.
Fault to the jam.
Yeah, I think, uh, I, I think the ten K was gone at this point, I remember this. The ten K was gone, it was just a, it was just a five point four, and then we were getting close, and it was just like.
The big chess, I don't know how it works, but they somehow always go very quickly.
Yeah, it was gone within the first, uh, it was like, what, a hundred and eight get paid? And that's when the mystery bounty was in effect, and then at like ninety people, it was gone.
Is this a good any two spot?
This guy was a nit, I'm pretty sure.
I think you can just about go any two for a lot of people.
I like a limp here, am I wrong?
No, it's a, I think a limp raises due, but this guy's a nit, he folds.
This might raise, um.
Seems like a fine raise, it's an easy fold.
I, yeah, I mean, if he's, if he's a nit, eleven percent, yeah, right, raised.
Yeah, like the weakest, like queen suited, jack suited.
Mm-hmm, even like ten three suited, I think is a theory raise.
Okay, so we find a call here, probably fine, finally get one, good job. Was that a good, a good chest?
Uh, it was a four eighty, I believe. Yeah, so I was, I was gonna jam any two on the.
Hard here, to call here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I'm calling to jam the, yeah, to, to call this, like I'm not folding.
This is honestly a little bit out of line. You got three.
What do you mean? You don't think he's got? You don't think he's got nine ten here?
No, I think it's just the, the call is out of line, and then the other call is also out of line. Well, like you could do that with ace ten suited here, it would be fine. And then calling up with ace ten here would be fine, cause you gotta gut check one over card, blah, 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 blah. Right, a backdoor flush, something. This is a little bit splashy to me. You like it, Kevin?
I think. I don't know, it's, it's probably alright.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know.
I'm indifferent. Three X three kinda gets me. I'm kind of indifferent, to be honest.
Well, he's three Xing, I'm assuming when he's three Xing, he's just not folding, like, to anyone, he's just doing that. Like saying he's all in, I, I don't know.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah. Plus the two point six big blinds in the, in the big blind.
So how do you approach it, Louis, if he just opened jams, nine big blinds?
I, I saw.
Ay, ay, ay. Yeah, man.
That's what I'm getting at, well, that's what I'm getting at, like, what's the difference between him opening three and just jamming with regards to ace nine?
I don't think that's worse, I think it's a lot better, because then, when you make it three here, okay, you're. Opening yourself to action, right? And then when you jam here, this guy has three big ones. Alright, so you're potentially playing for both, and then. When you jam here, you ISO, so you can't do it, can't do it, you know, and if he does it, but wow, you're already priced in, you know?
So ICM though, too, right?
But I think once we're here, they calling this is a bit out of line.
What do you think about the idea of men clicking him there on the uh, pre-flop? Because it leaves him open for the action to re-click.
Yeah.
Threatens to like trap everyone else in the middle.
Exactly, that, that would be maybe a good plan.
It's an extra two big blinds, you get a lot of protection.
And then we get jammed on by a king quino, and we have to fold.
It seems good.
Yeah, I like this. Just whatever, though.
You do, but it's like, yeah.
That's why I limped.
This is a bit out of line as well, I think.
I think cutoff or button, you can limp that behind.
I agree, I think that's, or at least, yeah, it's, it's better, it's higher review.
With bounties in play, can't.
I, I, I.
Seems fine.
I, I soiled myself here for sure.
Wait, why, this is, this is perfect.
Woo.
It's just like, you know, it's like, probably like final eighty, final seventy, and.
Oh my goodness, look at this way.
Big sweat.
Oh my god. I remember this hand duly, I think I went to bed after this hand, I was like, I just can't stay up and sweat all night. At least on the flop, you know you win the side pot.
Okay, open jam, right into it, are you gonna scam him? Are you gonna scam?
I run too good, man.
Who else is good?
Brushing souls.
Hit the showers.
Ah, right.
Later, I'm out.
I got a fold, right, yeah.
Who has scanned him?
Are you gonna play here just for the booty? That's a bit out of line, but okay.
I think it's out of line too. Just had a massive stack, so it was like, screw it. Well, I thought I jammed here.
Now you gotta fold. Yeah. Nah, I don't know about this limp here.
You, you know what, it, it honestly might have been a misplay.
What's under the gun doing?
I'm not sure.
We haven't played with him, have we, or have we?
I, I don't remember.
He's opened limp several times.
Oh, that's the guy with sixes from the other hand, huh?
On him, jam, surely I jammed, yeah.
This is a fine raise.
I notice you have no problem raising bigger from the small blind when you have kings.
I think it's a function of, of who's to my left, that guy had like sixty big lines, the other guy had like twenty-five.
Another sweat coming.
Dealing with her, oh my goodness.
We're dealing with a pure scam, Louis.
Flipping with overlay. Basically.
We got small, okay, you could call as well.
Is it like final table bubble, or, or, I mean, like?
Uh, yeah, it's like. I wanna say it's like top fifty or top forty.
There's only thirty-eight hands left.
It might be final two tables.
No, we got. A lot of hands left.
I thought you said there was a hundred hands.
One hundred thirty. We're not even halfway.
So it's like forty.
I think tens are too good, right? Feels kinda icky.
Honestly, if it's not a Mr. Bounty, I don't know what I do.
I think.
Easy call.
I think this might depend what chests are left. Like if all the big chests are gone.
This is really.
Yeah, the ten and five Ks were gone at this point.
Good against the small blind, I think.
The, the, the ten and five K were gone, so.
I mean, I, I don't think I've ever folded here.
Yeah, honestly, I'm not folding there, I don't think, I might, they may get me.
Like tens, call first, a small blind and big blind.
You make that fold, you see those hands, you're like, I'm winning this thing.
You gotta remember that, even though we're only halfway.
Yeah, jacks.
Even though we're only halfway through his hand history, he late regged near the end of late registration.
Yeah.
It was like forty-five minutes or forty minutes to late reg.
How good did you feel when you saw jacks there, after you folded?
I was feeling good about my fold anyway, I was like, whatever. Go, I'm playing, I, I was, like, at this point, I was playing for the ring, I didn't really care for the mystery bounties anymore.
I wouldn't have expected to do.
This was, this. The, this guy put me in the box, man, I was tanking here for like, like, the whole, like, I, I ran out of my time, like, I did not know what to do.
I wouldn't have expected to, to do good against a big blind, but we had the small blind covered, and I think I would have did well against them, the tens, and I would have called. And obviously, we got there with his king, but.
Wow.
He just, he just boxed me right up.
I don't think I could fold this.
We have the ace of diamonds that we might want him to have.
Exactly, they would rather have king ten, yeah.
When I play well, I snap fold because people don't check raise bluff jam turns enough, it's almost always like face up.
Yeah, this guy wasn't too out of line, he wasn't like doing anything that like was surprising me, he had decent stats, so. And I had the ace of diamonds, and I'm like, ah, it's not good, I did not wanna have the ace of diamonds. Um, so.
Like, why wouldn't he check raise like king ten, queen ten, if you have like a worse ten, why aren't you raising that on the flop, right? Like, it just feels so bad to me right now.
If he check raised, can't you check behind on turn?
He didn't check raise flop, right?
We raised flop.
Oh.
Okay.
He, he stabbed like third, and we raised like three X.
This, the solver's never gonna fold top here, like, never.
Nah, it's an exploit.
No, you're right, you're right duly, I was thinking the same thing, like, I, I mean, this is a theory call all day versus a balanced opponent, but. Like you said, it's a, this is definitely an underbluff spot, um.
I'm pretty sure this is the guy I won heads up against, too, by the way.
It's gonna be like four, three, and deuce three, and stuff like, like, what are some six, like, six, four? But yeah, he, he won't find all those.
And what he's gonna find, two pairs, sets.
Exactly.
And that's about it.
You know, there might be the occasional like flush draw here with additional equity, like, what's he gonna do with like six, seven of diamonds?
Ace three diamonds, king three diamonds, diamond, jack three diamonds.
Like, he's gonna have some, he's gonna have some hands that like you're doing okay against, but I feel like you're just torched here a lot of the time. Can you go to the small blind jam range?
Uh, yes, but hang on.
Okay.
So it's like your third best call, Louis. Four bets call, like, equity wise, it doesn't really get better than that, and then. Having the diamond makes it better.
Oh.
That's interesting.
Uh, what do you wanna do? Uh, you wanna see the all-in range?
Yeah, please. So some threes.
It's like worst tens.
Worst tens, yeah.
A little bit of game sometimes.
Can you do the height to see how many of those tens he does, he actually has in range?
Yeah, and you also have to ask yourself, like, does this make like logical sense? Like, is he not, is he not check raising the flop with like his vulnerable tens, but then he just decides, screw it on the turn, and he starts check raising? Like, I'm not saying that doesn't happen, but it's definitely low frequency.
Oh, he led and duly raised on the flop.
Oh, is that what happened? He led duly raised? Man, this is a goofy line. But he didn't three bet, so it's still, I think what you're saying is still applies again. Okay. Like, is he gonna bet call and then all of a sudden check jam?
It really feels like an ace five here, an ace four, right? Uh, some ace three, I mean. What does that, like, pocket three, no, pocket deuce, pocket four, pocket five, ace three.
I would have a lot of trouble folding this, just cause blind on blind people go crazy, they tend to not believe you. So, I'm sorry, I missed the pre-flop action, what was the pre-flop action?
Raise call?
So he raised and you called duly, is that what happened?
Yes.
So I mean, like, this guy's got all the overpairs and stuff too, that could just be like panicking.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could be, alright, gets in a pack, okay, the board's getting scarier.
But wouldn't, wouldn't he get an overpair all in here?
Well, I mean, like, are you gonna rip? Maybe, yeah, I mean, I don't.
Well, I'm, I'm betting bigger with jacks.
I mean, are you ripping aces, are you ripping aces with a diamond or kings with a diamond, no?
No. I'm not.
Well, mostly a raise on the flop.
Yeah, over pair could be.
Burn.
Might raise bigger pre with an over pair.
Check.
What's up with all these like two point whatever X blind on blind, isn't that too small?
It's definitely too small.
I think it depends on the stack depth, like, if you're like twenty-five bigs, I think you can go smaller.
Well, you do, it's just, it's. Two point five or three, I think it's about as small as it gets usually.
Yeah. This is a spot where you're never ever good somehow. You chip raisin, you blast, and then he does that? There's no way we win here, although like. What else can we defend here with, you know?
Yeah, this is disgusting.
And you have him covered for his booty, like.
That makes it even, well, that makes it even more of a thing, right? Cuz it's like, he doesn't really benefit financially. By like trying to hunt your booty here.
Time to dig in the stats a little bit.
Yeah, I would definitely be in the box here and I.
I mean, if you can't call. If you can't call a shove with top, top, should you just be checking the turn there then?
Well, he's only gonna shove infrequently, right?
Well, you don't expect, I mean, when I put a fifteen, when I put an eight big blind bet out here like this, I, I don't expect the jam. Very frequently, but.
This guy's a tight aggressive and he's doing it and then, yeah.
No, my Vip up here was like twenty seven, man. I don't know how it's sixteen.
I see here, after fifty three hands, you played thirteen percent.
We saw way more than seven hands, so I mean, like, that's definitely wrong.
That you put the money in, not that you call and that you tree back.
I'm, I'm curious how this hand plays out to be.
Yeah, I'm dying. I want to edge my seat. I think he folds.
He folds, yeah, he folded the turn.
Like having ace of diamonds books like bluffs, right?
Honestly, man, like, sometimes you just have to de- deviate from like the theory books and stuff and. I feel like these are the kind of folds that you, you just dodge these spots where you're supposed to lose the tournament sometimes.
It's very simple. When you take like two very strong lines, check raise on the flop, blast the turn. And you're still facing aggression.
I mean, come on, right? Like, if you don't have tells, like.
No, no, it's like you're beaten here every time. It's tough to know by what, but you're just never gonna win.
He's gonna show you like five, four suited or something.
And if you put it in the machine, like, it's one of our best calls, so.
He's probably, he's probably got kings, let's be honest.
I mean, some people occasionally sp- sp- uh, some people occasionally spaz their worst under bear. That they think, okay, like they don't have, they missed the ten. What's that?
So two hundred dollar tournament in the money.
It doesn't mean there's not bad players. I said I would fold, but I'm just saying occasionally kind of what they will spaz with occasionally.
Oh, my fuck this hand, bro.
I just call it white magic is what I call that duly. White mag.
Yep, that's, that's what I was thinking. He wouldn't, he wouldn't tell me.
So big, what is this?
This guy also put me at the box, man. Like, it was just like, this is like final two tables, by the way. I remember.
So this is a little bit different. This is a little bit different. Like, he's got a range advantage here, so he can represent stronger hands. One, two, there's, there's spades, there's queen X, like, there is a lot. There is a lot he could be bluffing here.
So this guy is, I remember him. His name was Irish poet and he had a VP of forty five or something and he was just splashing.
You just go then.
Yeah, I was just like, no, I'm, I'm.
Bro, I was. I knew exactly he had either this hand or king, or king, jack.
I typed in the chat, I'm like, man, you either have a screen or you're full of shit.
I, I, I can only imagine your reaction when you saw that to ever.
Oh, I was, oh my goodness, bro.
I imagine, oh no, oh yes.
I think we can read into his sizing there.
Oh, wait a second, king four.
Maybe.
So when you're like, king four's a fold versus like under the gun, right? Yeah.
Super high VP. And this next hand, he was, he was tilted, so I just, I just jammed at his face. And then I started emoting him and, uh, he, he tanked for like a minute and then.
I don't love it, though. Should do that small here, I think.
When you emote, you always have it.
So I mean, this is. But I don't always have it.
Called if you go like eight or nine big blinds.
All right, we're talking about it. I just, I just wanna clarify for duly. We're, we're talking about things we don't know. The emoji bluff game duly is a master, okay? So the man's got some moves. Let the man have his moves.
I've been caught with seven deuce off, but like with emoji buffs and shit, so I, I, uh.
Is this a good see?
Multiway, I don't know. I would, I would see bet this in position. I think the board's dry enough.
I would as well.
So isn't the queen, like we got small blind hands, this is what I was talking about earlier. I think ace hide boards are better for us, but you get to the king, queen hide boards, I think it's better for the small blind.
Yeah, it might be, Ken. It might be.
Ken, I posted the graph button versus small blind at forty. In chat.
Did we bet on this turn?
I, what was the flop action?
That call, that small, that small call. One point, what, twenty five percent pot?
Yeah, I'm going pretty big here.
I'm not sure, damn, cuz there's not that much I really wanna get folds from. I guess some ace highs that are feeling sticky, but.
I mean, like, don't be a showdown, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It's about you bad boys.
Maybe you wanna bet more like King six, King seven and check more with these. Well, that's the thing, if this is a value, but I feel like we have to go a little small cuz. We're trying to get called by like Queen ten, stuff like that. This is too thin, thin.
The guy to my right is also, the guy in the small blind is a fish slash, uh. Uh, like, I don't know how he got to the final table, to be honest, but he's a fish slash maniac.
This is the final table.
Yes. Snap fold.
Amazing.
Did you get deeper?
Yeah, we did. Oh, I guess I'm hijacked. It's not that bad.
Whoa, what happened?
Uh, that guy got a note instantly. He didn't free bet ace enough.
Wow, he's smooth call like a criminal. And then snaps off his jack.
I mean, he got him.
He was happy on the flop, not happy on the third and very happy on the river.
It should be noted that there's two three thousand dollar bounties still in play.
That matters actually quite a bit.
And what, what was first? Like nine K?
Something like.
Nine point nine, nine point nine K, yeah.
Oh, the big bets, he's gonna call.
Oh, fold. It's an FT, I mean, it's so many chips.
It is, right? That's true.
He bet massive.
Look at this. Can you really fold this high?
Oh, man, I was crying. I was crying folding. I wasn't happy about folding, but I like.
What did the rabbit say?
I don't remember. It wasn't, it wasn't like.
Have a diamond, we can bet.
Yeah, I'd bet.
Hmm, check folding, seems a bit weak here. What do you guys think about this one?
We get, we cover him, so we get to be quite aggressive with the raising pre and I bet, I bet, I bet with a diamond, yeah.
That's, and they know.
Theory is never folding for sure. And like, he's gonna fold some, some like deuces, right? Like.
Yeah, JPV is no ICM, no whisper PM, likes to call.
I think cuz of what Louis said, we.
This is a full, Dooley.
All right, never mind.
Uh, what do you say, Manny?
I was just saying that because of what Louis said, we get, we're very aggressive pre, we cover him, we have the six, four and deuce more in our range than we would at chip EV and. I like a bet for that reason.
Okay.
With the diamond.
Okay. Uh, you guys like this defend? Cuz I would always fold here.
I'm, I think he was just opening a lot.
Yeah, I'm calling.
Louis.
You gotta bet bigger on the turn and you give up on the ace.
In ICM, um. It does get tighter, but the, the charts still prefer having the, um. Si- uh, un-CD connectors.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't fold two D connectors. You can fold like five, four.
Are you guys looking at PKO charts or are we just, are we just trying to extrapolate from typical final table charts?
Just from typical final table.
Okay.
Looking at a similar one to that, uh, stack setup and it has this mixing. It calls like twenty percent of the time. Um, it folds like eighty percent of the time. So it's majority fold then. Yeah, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't make any money until you get to ten, nine off. That's the first.
For what, for what it's worth, I. Yeah, for what it's worth, I definitely like a fold here personally.
Me too. We need ten nine. The river is not a great bet. Also, I think this is a spot where you don't bet really one. Here you polarize.
Yeah, equity shift, I should, I should be betting way bigger.
I don't know, four? But I think, uh, if it goes check, check on the flop, you got top.
I like. I like three or four, three or four is good.
I think you, you might even have some overbets if it goes check, check.
Maybe, and then on the river, it's never a black bet.
You're not gonna be overbetting into that guy, I don't think, without the stones.
Ah, yeah, 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 yeah. Is this a call?
I mean, whatever. You could flick in chips, you're on the button, but you, we, we know what pocket nines and pocket tens do here. We know.
So, yeah, yeah, exactly. But like, I was like, I was at a, I don't know, man. It was just like a big final table, right? So I'm like, I really don't wanna run my equity with nines.
Okay.
You shouldn't. I can jam here.
So this is a pretty impressive final table, Dooley. It's not like you had a lot of chips here.
I guess the chips, second to last.
Yeah, that's pretty short the whole time.
Is this a call? Was this even an open beginning?
I was gonna say maybe an open shove, but maybe two week, I don't know.
I wouldn't open the PK only because they're gonna call a bit wider to try to bust you. These bigger stacks, like the big blind's gonna never fold for sure. And you're just gonna get out flops like every time.
Yep.
Think at a final table, I would just fold the sand pre.
We're just the shorty, that's the thing. Like, we're like, like equal stack, the shorty, so.
If I'm gonna play it, I'd probably just open jam. I don't know. It's like, it's gonna be so hard to realize post.
I mean, I don't think you open jam in the hijack fifteen big blinds.
Yeah, I'm looking at a, I'm at a final table, non PKO, um, it has fifteen big blinds in the hijack, no open raising until pocket sevens. No jamming at all. Is this a call? Yeah. Sure?
I think my reason for calling here is, is this guy was the splashster, if I recall correctly, Irish poet.
Okay. So you're gonna call again?
Yeah, I mean, he just priced me around.
Hmm. It's bad. Yeah, you're open from, from the start, let's say. Little bit questionable. Just call, please. No.
Yeah, it's fine. Honestly, it's probably fine because there's a bounty in play, like big bounty.
And distribution and blah, blah, blah.
There was a lot of, uh, there's a bunch of nine hundreds, like three of them. But, uh.
I am with, I am with Louis here, like, um, you're gonna realize. Wait, you're gonna realize all your equity calling there a lot, so.
Yeah, you're ten big blind. What do you think is gonna happen? Nothing is gonna ever make you fold your aces. Not. Totally convinced about betting this king high on the flop. If. It's a bet a lot, but like. I think to begin with, this is a raise and not a limb. What do you guys say?
So it meets the criteria. Yep, yep, that's true. So you are gonna tighten up a little bit, but I mean, it meets a lot of the criteria that we were kinda talking about earlier. Unblocks the folds, has a high card blocker. I could see it being a fine raise.
My rationale for. Mid-suited kings do well as, or mid-offsuit kings, excuse me, do well as races.
What's your rationale, Dooley?
Yeah, my rationale for betting on the, or like leading on the flop is just cuz like, he does not have any aces. He shouldn't have any aces, uh, especially that it's a PK or whatever, like he, he will jam into me.
You're, um, honestly, I, I like where your thoughts are because he should be ISOing the majority of his aces versus your open. I would think, I don't know, what do you think, Lily?
Definitely. Here's the thing, we, we don't really need to get protection from two undercards. Like if he has, you know, like ten, eight or whatever, there's not really a lot of protection that we're getting. I think we do better if we let those hands catch up and then get a value bet in against them on the turn of the river. Like, we'd love for ten eight to find a ten or an eight.
Um, right.
Just so.
I like that better, actually.
Your cards now draw us. It's not that, yeah, I mean, I know we have the best hand most of the time. There's no doubt about that. Like, he has some better kings. He has King A, King nine, King ten sometimes.
It's a matter of getting called, right?
The highest TV line, like, we certainly have the best hand most of the time, or we just fold out trash a lot. That's all that happens.
Right, so if you bet bet, like, you really have to be concerned about what he's continuing with at that point.
Yeah, at that point, we've I stood him into like decent kings, which we're like sort of tied with. And a couple aces that he made, found his way to the flop with.
I agree.
What about this one here? Is it fold?
Oh, man, I'm getting out of the way here.
Yeah, it's near the bottom, it's near the bottom of our pairs that we open.
Yep.
Look at this.
I, I think.
Nine big blinds, he's like.
I think, I think this is Irish poet, if I, like, cuz he, he had a VP of like forty something and then a three bit of like three.
Either this one or this one, but you can't change your Irish poet based on.
No, no, I, Irish poet, I'm a hundred percent certain. It's the guy that raised nine big blinds. The guy on the bottom right is, uh, I think his name is Hucklin. He's the fish maniac guy.
We'll put a screenshot in chat, um, big ones play against our small blind limp, even when he covers us, might not be quite as aggressive as you guys think. Silver is limping, limping back, checking back, ace two suited, ace nine suited in Silverland.
Really?
Yep, and a mix of the week off the bases. So he has some, he's supposed to have some aces there.
Yeah, he has to keep some aces in his check back.
Exactly. I'll, I'll put a screenshot up. Is this a better jam? Or a min raise?
I like jamming here.
Yeah, so let's look at Tim's screenshot. So this is what?
The, I think it's small blind versus big blind range.
Seven off, we have? So it's majority limp, right?
Now, this is, this is the big blind response. So he's still gonna have ton of aces in his range if, or he checks behind.
Yeah, okay. So I think you should be jamming a lot here more than opening. What do you guys say?
Be, be jamming. I, okay, so the way I would mix my, my hands here are maybe like, the ones I wanna fold to a jam, I would min raise. And the ones that I have the additional equity with, I would be jamming, I think. So like, I don't know, I might be more inclined to open like ace five offsuit. And jam, or like, if this was a seven offsuit, I would be more inclined to open it, but since it's suited, I'd be more inclined to jam it.
Alan is exactly correct. I'll, uh, put in a screenshot.
I think cuz of the bounty, you get to shop a bit wider as well, cuz you might get cooled by worse aces.
I would agree with that.
Uh, should we check back against a small blind?
So he's gonna have a lot of Jack, ten, nine, queen. So he's gonna have a lot of jack, ten, nine, queen, eights. I think.
Yeah, he's gonna have a lot of connection between the queen and the eights. This is definitely what we wanna check.
Right, so if it, if you are betting, it's a spot where you probably need to like, bet a little bit larger, and we're not really in a position with this hand to do that, so. I would check.
I like it. Surrender.
Now, this is a tricky one, okay? So he's, he's checked twice. He's checked twice, and we kind of pick up equity. He's really capped. Like, I could almost see an argument for betting the turn, but we have an ace, so it's like, why not show it down, right?
Uh-huh.
I'm in like team showdown.
We also have a draw that's gonna struggle against a check raise.
That's true, yeah.
We wanna realize equity with our six here.
Yeah.
Happy days. Jamming?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is, I think, I think.
Whoa.
This is, Dooley, Dooley, I don't, I don't hate it, Dooley. I don't hate it. It's, it's spicy, man, but, um. I, I would just jam, probably.
I, I hate it, cuz sometimes if you just cool, sometimes you don't win the bounty. If the flop's awful, if he just flats, the bid re-raise.
It allows Dooley to get out of the way if one of those big stacks wants to play.
It's the good old Jack then five.
Is this the line we would be taking with a set of jacks?
This is the.
Yes.
Then.
Oh, not with the set, but.
You guys don't recognize this?
Yeah, it's the, it's the three X pot jam board.
Yeah.
That's correct, that's correct. Yeah, this is, if you have a pot, if you have a board that you can go absolutely bananas on, this is the board.
So we go all in with ace king here, with the ace queen?
Yeah, both of those are fine jams.
There's jack. And then you pray for the happy days.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, Dooley.
It's a sweat, it's a sweat.
You're into it again.
We're ahead.
We actually are ahead. We have like sixty five.
Uh-oh, now we're not ahead. Ooh.
That we're crying. Come on, dealer.
What is it gonna be?
Oh, man, I was spamming just one times.
Oh, the queen, not even a spade, not even a king. Wow, that safety card. What was worth that just, Dooley?
Uh, I think it was nine hundred. I got like two nine hundreds, or no, like one nine hundred. Two four eighties, and the rest were min bounties, I believe, two sixties.
How often do you three bet here?
Hmm, I don't know. Not a lot with my suited aces.
In my book, this would be a good one to three bet.
I struggle with the. Like, I don't know what I'm supposed to three bet bluff quote-unquote here.
This.
Yes, wheels.
Suited change, suited aces.
I thought the suited aces like to, hello, like to, uh. Uh, flat more, and then the offsuit ones, like the three bet more.
I honestly, I was gonna, I was gonna say that. I think you do have quite a few like trashy offsuit aces that, um, that kind of. Bluff, you know, here.
I think we would have offsuit aces if we were chip leader. Not as middle stack.
From what I remember, when, when I've done work on, um, ICM spots. It reverts more to the suited side than the offsuit side.
Mm-hmm. It's a little different from the big blind, though, because you, you have the two conflicting things going on here, right?
Yeah, I'll, I can't say no for sure from big blind.
Let's look at it in pre-flop academy.
You can't, we.
Yeah, that's a similar spot, the one I just.
Yeah, but can you show us the big blind range, Tim?
We were in big blind, we were, we were on button. And I looked for one where we covered him slightly.
We. Oh.
I was on the previous hand, I was on ace queen suited. Sorry, I'm not on this hand.
Yeah, pre, pre-flop academy, uh, the subscription relapsed today, so if you want pre-flop academy back, subscribe to our Patreon.
All right, thirty five lines versus a larger open from button.
Oh, my goodness, today's the day.
You mean the day you're gonna subscribe to our Patreon, I hope.
Okay, this one's not perfect, but it's close.
Can you make me a deal in bezels?
We can work something out.
Good. Can I pay in six months?
Absolutely, your credit's good here.
Yeah, while I'm on the mic, I'll say, yeah, I thought the small three bet with ace queen suited was very bad, and I'm wrong, so just wanted to say that. Uh, here's, uh, here's the big blind versus button open. Uh, we call with, uh, our suited aces.
Any three bets?
Zero.
Yeah, see, it's pulling from the, it's pulling from the trash. It's pulling from the trash here.
The kings and then the trash for bluffs. Yeah, this is pretty similar. This is, um, this is big blind has thirty, and button has thirty seven covering us, so not, not so different.
So very rarely do we use these low offsuit aces. Uh, the most common one is when it's big blind versus button, from what I understand.
Definitely.
Yeah, you're, you're right, Louis. Honestly, it's just, it's a big blind thing. It's a big blind thing, because.
A big blind thing versus LP only, right? Not versus.
Uh, it does reverse EP too. It's just big blind, yeah, it does do it some.
Big blind loves free bet in the blocker hands.
Well, you know what? That also makes more sense, cuz we're getting better odds just to flat with the suited side.
We looked at one EP earlier, I thought it was more linear.
I think this size is very interesting.
Do we raise?
Uh, I would call.
No, right?
Well.
Good trap hand, top and bottom.
I don't, I don't know, man. I, I.
Also, if a king comes on the turn, then we can still get away.
Of course.
Louis went with the call.
I like, I don't hate the call. I like the call, I think. I like the call.
That's a break. Oh, I remember this guy had like absolute trash.
Jesus.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Seconding river card in the deck.
Three or four big blinds?
I check.
Why?
What's he bet big and check back a lot? A king?
A little bit, little bit combo draws.
Oh, let him bluff the combo.
King X diamonds is available.
Sometimes he has jacks.
Yeah, check it off.
I like a blood bet here after that turn goes check, check.
Yeah, I think this is. I think I'm with Louis. Bet two.
And a block bet kinda makes you look weakish.
Versus maniac, do we wanna block bet it? Like, we may induce him.
That's scary, right?
The fish maniac.
Think you should fold here, Dooley.
Dooley.
I think you're right, Louis.
Oh, my God.
Wait a minute.
No.
Wait, 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 wait.
I, I, I'm in your hand, you're against cutoff. You're blocking the bottom of his range.
I meant, I meant on the flop, sorry.
I, I can, I can let the pre-flop call. Without saying too much, but I can't see this call at all.
Yeah, I, I don't know what I was thinking.
We have the double backdoor straight draw potential with the over.
Oh, my God, did I do it here?
The SPRs, I'm sorry.
Do you have other things, Dooley? So first off, you're like, bet call. The six bearing on the big line.
Yeah, we lead a lot here, I think.
You could give it a shot. I think it's, it would be a good strategy.
So about the bet call, and ICM is like a commerce, smallest SPR, are we really supposed to be like check calling? One over with backdoor draws?
Definitely not.
Definitely not. It's definitely a mistake on the flop.
I thought we just glazed over that. I, I didn't think we were supposed to.
You miss a bluff here, you miss a bluff on the turn, you miss a bluff on the river. You gotta.
I didn't, I don't think I.
Club too.
Did I do it? I think I.
No, Dooley, you're a nit. You don't do it.
Oh, I'm a nit.
Look at this. Oh, you win anyway. You're a genius.
Yeah, you don't even need to.
I, I think it's. I think here, I remembered like what Galen says, like, we don't like turning ace high, or like he hates turning ace high into a bluff.
On the river, it's true.
Yeah, but like, we have the ace of clubs. I think at JPV I jam a lot here, but I was a little scared.
I think the way he actually went, I think checking's good, cuz he checked turn. Like, if you were, if you led turn, you gotta bluff river, I think. But the way it played out, I think showing it down's perfect.
This is just a call? Check, check. Ooh.
He's not gonna fall, whatever.
I, I hate the dog on the turn because.
My God, dude.
Oh.
All right.
Wait, so what happened? He turned his six into a bluff?
Yeah, he did. So big blind lead, he calls, that's fine, I think that's good. Turn, check, check.
You can bluff with ace high, but you can bluff with fourth pair.
Yeah, you blocked a straight, but you don't have a diamond, which is dicey.
Honestly, like, okay, so I, I, I like this more than bluffing ace high, just because.
You know what? It is different, cuz.
I'm sorry. Big component, yeah, I was gonna say, a big component of his leads here is seven X. So like, you're gonna get seven X to fold on a jam here pretty frequently.
That was exactly my rationale. Except I was like, please don't have diamonds, please. But I didn't, I really just didn't think he had diamonds.
He would have double barrel, probably.
Checking, yeah, exactly.
He would have double barrel with diamonds, I think, a lot of the time.
So you went for the big bluff?
Yeah, when I first saw this, I saw him three, three X pot, but I didn't realize that's like one to one SPR with the big blind.
It's like one and a quarter here roughly.
So. Do you need to do that?
Uh, that's a good question, Louis. I don't know. I can understand it.
I need to. Yeah, because.
I understand.
That, like, he, he goes bet call, he could do it with like a worse six, he could do it with a four, he could do it with pocket five.
He doesn't really have pocket fives, right? Cuz he should be jamming pre.
You're definitely getting some better hands to fold here. Like, all his pairs, sevens, or eights, nines, or eights. Tens, jacks, queens, kings, they're folding, right?
He's stepping that pre-flop into your face, Ken.
Honestly, this is like, literally, you're literally targeting, um.
A seven?
Seven.
That's it, that's it, that's it. Which, honestly, I don't think's crazy, Dooley, because that's gonna be a big part of his leading strategy.
Or a river nine.
Or a better six, but I mean, I, I, yeah, he could have a better six. It's just, I, getting in the habit of targeting hands that you block is usually not a great practice.
Yeah, you surely put him in the box.
Will, we do block the straight here too, though.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's true, Joey. That's true.
All right, we go away with it.
Or a river nine.
Could be that too. Well, I mean, I guess he could have a river nine.
What position, what, what, what position were we against there?
I think it was button big blind.
But Louis, you would call the ace queen?
I like the, I like that three bet.
I was just thinking cool because of the shorty. And we were covered, no?
Well, we're all very deep, so.
Pressure's very high on both of us, like a three bet. If we three betting get jammed on, it's pretty bad. That's an easy fold. Why don't you? Yeah, but you're wasting the equity of your hand.
I, I don't.
Yeah, but. Be more polar. No, you're against a button range. You can't just not three bet hands. It's a final table.
And this is waiting late here, Dooley. You need to bet at least one more street, minimum.
I'm sure ace queen flats some portion.
Yeah, I didn't go for no value there.
Just call? Why are you down here?
Nah, that's definitely just a call.
Yeah, you're in. It's definitely just a call.
Oh, my.
I, I just wanted it.
Yeah, okay, okay, you wanted it.
Was that a raise, and then we got three bet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then four bet jam winner.
Yeah, you get more chips going there.
I don't think it is a call.
Louis, what are you doing, man?
Raise in position with bottom pair. That's what I'm doing.
Oh, my goodness. And it works, what a genius.
I'm, I'm, I'm committing war crimes, is what I'm doing.
Galen, do you just slide aces in that spot?
I honestly, I missed the spot. I, uh, what was the?
We kinda blew by it, I think it.
It was interesting.
There's two hands together, there we go.
So what happened? There was a open, and this guy three bets really small, out of position.
The SPR is gonna be less than two, two to one.
Just always calling here.
Yeah, me too.
I like a call, um.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I call here. I call here some. I don't hate jamming, though. I think jamming's fine.
That was it? It's Dooley gets out of line with bottom pair.
What, what do you think, Nick? What are you gonna do there? You wanna raise that?
I think. I think any of it is okay, but if we wanna have a four bet jamming range, we need to have aces some of the time in there.
Hmm.
Louis, what's, what's up with all these big bets you're pulling right now? You think this is a big bet spot?
Against the small blind? Uh, it's my worst ace.
Exactly.
Usually the ace low, low or small bet spot, right?
More like a bet small to me, yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz now what? They're gonna check back? Yeah. Oh, my goodness.
Actually, in chat, I have a. I have the report posted.
He has no fours in the small blind, right? I'm jamming.
You just call it, don't.
No, but he has ace five and ace three.
But it's, it's Irish poet. He does.
Yeah, it's five. That's why, that's why the ace low, low is small bet.
Yeah, ace low, low is mostly small bet.
That bet big was terrible, I.
This is a spot where you have some big bets, like with sevens, I don't know.
Did he have ace five offsuit?
Yes.
Yep.
Again, this guy has a VP of like forty five.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that's fine.
I like this.
Didn't raise third pair there.
You don't like that? What part don't you like?
Yeah, 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 I know.
It's not that I dislike it, I just think it's a, it's a crappy run out. It's a tough hand on his part. I mean, yeah.
By the way, that guy should never have ace five oh.
And you still had eight, you called the turn, so it's, I mean, it's not terrible. It's not a losing call. With that eight seven off.
Fair enough.
Yeah, just a crappy run out. You know, you're gonna get put in stuff spots. I mean, maybe it's a close fold, but it's not a, it's not a punt or anything.
Yeah, I don't hate the ace seven off jam there. Maybe.
So this guy dunked it into this guy.
Don't even notice. I wouldn't say it.
I didn't see it.
Did you just open and jam king queen off?
Yeah, he did, but R five against a big blind, ten bigs effective.
No, but wasn't the big stack in there still?
Yeah, I felt that.
No.
Yeah, go back.
I thought the big stack was still alive.
I think the big stack was the big blind.
No.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Okay, yeah, it's fine then.
You feel additional pressure playing for a ring?
No. Well, yeah, but no.
Okay, so.
Like now, now is like when I felt, now is when I felt all the pressure. It's like, okay, well, this isn't just the ring, this is like a fifteen hundred dollar ticket, and a thing to Vegas, and a. You know, a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm very understudied. And but when I say understudied, small blind versus big one, I mean, like, not studied at all.
Oh, this is a call.
That's like, yeah, the, the equilibrium strategy has to go insane.
Ooh.
River got you this tournament.
Yeah, Dooley, you should tell everyone so they know exactly what you were playing for.
Can we not fly through heads up?
Yeah, go so.
Please.
He's got two minutes left, he's gotta fly through.
What was the last hand?
Oh.[1772.14]
Are you driving? Are you playing twenty tables?
I'm not.
Just asking.
Not playing any tables.
If you're driving your car, playing twenty tables and you keep asking me to go back and go back and go back.
No, it's dude, it's not. I'm not doing anything else. I'm, it's the only thing I'm doing and I wanna.
Well, Louis, the joke's on you. The application only allows you play four while driving, so. Checkmate.
Checkmate, Louis. Checkmate.
What, what is there to see here? We don't know. We couldn't see it before cuz you went by so quick.
It's like you just click the forward button until it's the next hand. Like, is this a pure raise? Do we ever limp this? What about three betting queen two off? What is our raise strategy versus limp strategy at this stack tip?
I'm not convinced that we raise this that much. I'm pulling up some.
I agree. I think, I think this is mostly a limp.
So is my.
The wedge. It's the, yeah, on the left side. Yep, it's the wedge. It's like a big triangle on the offsuit range. And this is a bit under the triangle.
Uh, Danny, you're supposed to limp a lot.
Yeah, you limp a lot.
Like, under twenty big blinds, it's like, you're limping like seventy percent of the time.
This is your four best strategy.
Assuming your opponent will jam correctly against.
Nothing too fancy.
True.
If they're just calling your min raise every time, then I think min raising performs better.
Yeah, but also when you, if you're going to min raise or fold, you can't get in there with some of the bottom hands that you can limp.
It can be very costly to assume your opponent's gonna play bad heads up as well.
Don't even check raises flop.
So I was thinking about that. Yeah, i- in my head, I'm like, if I had a diamond, I would raise, but I don't know if that's right or wrong.
I like that.
A diamond's nice. Actually, a king and over to the queen's nice too, but he's just so wide here. I think the check raise is still nice. Now, I mean, we definitely gotta fold.
No, definitely not folding.
On the turn?
Oh, like here? Oh, on the turn? I think I fold, but.
So we made the straight sixteen percent of the time or offered thirty percent pot odds. If we had the diamond, it would be different. Oh, wait, yeah, we have back, we have open-ended.
Yeah, but, uh, two outs might not be good.
Yeah. With the diamond, it'd be better. So here we are, five ten off. Then five off majority limp. Is this a good bet?
Big bet.
Is this a good bet with a five here heads up?
No, I think it's a check with third pair.
If we bet. You wanna bet your bet small, I think, but not to like check.
I, I thought we don't really bet small heads up. That's, that's what I was told. That's, that's my limited knowledge.
Who said that?
Like you go half-bought a lot. I don't remember if it's Vince.
That's VTO, right?
He'll definitely have small bets. Seems weird to me. Um, and I think third pairs are generally high-frequency checks unless like this kicker is an overcard to the board.
Right.
Also, can we just look at?
Go ahead.
After this, can we look at big blind equilibrium response to the min raise?
Nothing too fancy, right? Aces, pairs.
Yeah, it is pretty straightforward. Okay, thanks.
It looks like we bet if we have a ten of hearts, but check mostly other combos.
So mixing in sizes, but men, it's only small bets, right? The bigger you go is like two into four. You know what? We could do one session sometime soon. We, we never practiced heads up. Yeah, we can do that.
Um, tip from the guy who came up and said, and goes, um, get you guys on some like ten dollar, you know, six max. Sitting goes, like you will play heads up. Um.
Yeah, I played, I played.
What is this?
Oh, this is, I remember.
Louis, what the hell is this?
Don't seem too nervous to me about winning all that, that big package.
I don't, I hate this. I absolutely hate this. Why are we bluffing?
With a five again?
Get.
Blocker, I guess.
Well, there's a difference here. When you were earlier, the, the ranges weren't as wide. But the ranges are so wide, a pair of fives is still strong enough to showdown.
Yeah, he still has like every ace, six in range that he didn't. Three bet.
Do you think he would fold king, not two pair king to this? I think we might even get him off a king with the two X.
Ah, I, I don't know if he's folding a king.
We wanna have a heart to bluff in general, and we're not gonna wanna bluff with a pair heads up.
I mean, I agree with all that, but I'm just asking a different question.
It, it depends on the player. Solver's not gonna fold a king. Unless it's like a terrible blocker.
If you had, uh, like ten, six, maybe the, the mega bluff.
At ten, six would be great.
Think you'd wanna have a heart as well in your hand, a high heart?
I'd like. Okay, uh, can we, uh, take this action with the solver? I bet it's gonna have a zero percent jamming range.
And six, ten of hearts. That would be nice.
Like, when we bet.
Is a flush.
Just the ten of hearts.
So yeah, do we have, do we have any jams on the river with our range?
It broke the trail that one.
No, but Louis, he'll want to, he'll prefer hero calling with hands that block our straights. So when we have the ten, it blocks him from having his hero calls.
Okay.
Like, like king ten type of stuff.
Like, like ten A.
Yeah. So even though he won't have the straights, it's still, um, relevant cuz he wants to block our straights. Although here, I think.
It's ranges are capped. Like, we're not in a polarized part of the tree. We're not gonna have an overbet jam strategy.
Okay. And heads up. Like, you're such wide ranges, any pair's good. Pure check. Well, we got a little bit risky here. Oh, that's a good three bet, I think. Three bets, you bet. We don't have a spade. This is not great. Let's go. Is that turn good?
I feel like he's gonna keep blasting from what we're looking at.
Oh, man.
That's not. Like, what are you betting that size? You ever betting a king that way?
Yeah. Oh.
Not gonna go bigger?
At this point, I think Duli already has his name on the ring.
I, I was just like, like, okay, by the way, the hand before, the reason I jammed like with the ten five off is because I thought he would be pretty capped. Uh, there, even though, like, in, in theory, it's never a jam. It's fucking terrible.
Honestly, Duli, you don't.
Because of the ten blocker.
I wouldn't be too concerned with it, like, the, the heads up play is just gonna be out of line until you like really put some time studying this stuff. And it's like, I mean, I, I screw this stuff up too. Like, we could all benefit from studying more heads up.
I don't know how to play heads up, but.
I have no idea how to play heads up, as evident.
So I think this would be a good squeeze, no? Good, just shove.
I'm good at it a hundred big ones, Steve, but that's about.
I don't know if I shove it that.
Yeah. Duli, that's why I was asking if he would fold a king.
Wouldn't you want more shoves to suit it? Uh, I like giving up the turn after we three bet this.
Okay, so it's just. Going all in every time pre-flop.
Also good. But like, we can play like ace five off or something. Like, we're gonna have some three bets with the offsuit branch.
I'm thinking ace five off is also jamming. Oh, no, ace five off isn't. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so this one is probably acceptable, right? Because we have a diamond, we have an overcard, we have bottom pair on the flop. So I can get it. I, I like this one. What do you guys think?
I don't like it.
It's gonna be a low-frequency, uh, play, I think.
I think this one is the only time he raises some bottom pair with, where it makes sense.
Uh, we're gonna have flush draws and straight draws that can raise his bluff.
That's never raising, right?
Yeah.
Nah.
Oh, also another beat on this opponent, uh, Bowser just said in the chat, he was also watching in another Discord. Uh, he said the opponent looked scared when he was playing heads up, like he was playing pretty scared and passive, so. And pretty linear.
So I would.
Maybe that way.
I mean, I fully support exploiting in any hand ever, but we can't really study exploiting versus this player. Cuz we don't, you don't know this, but all we can discuss in the study is really GTO. So like, if you have reads, you should absolutely go with your reads.
Like, I'm curious why I didn't bet this flop. You're betting like all kind of stuff, and here you actually got an over, a straight redraw, clubs. And you just, and it's like a hard board for them to continue on cuz it's paired.
Yeah, I like seeing that.
Can, can, I couldn't, I honestly couldn't tell you why I didn't. Uh, because in hindsight, it would make a lot of sense to bet it, but like I also had a lot of adrenaline.
I was gonna say.
These things are for.
And why do you?
That's a very fair answer.
That's why we do these hand reviews, right? It's all good.
Hey, this one is, uh, check, check. Blast. Why do you bet turn here?
King of clubs, that's the only thing I can think of, really.
So value bet. Can just bet one, right?
Um, I don't like betting with king high or ace high. Uh, you just can get a showdown. King high is often good enough heads up.
Also true.
Is this not a range?
I think limping's fine at twenty-five bags. I'd be more inclined to raise the suited combo. I'd live the offsuit one.
Like, if it was one gap, it would be more inclined to raise.
I would fold.
Think you need a hard to call, right?
Yeah.
I think so too.
Then we have a open and a straight draw?
Yeah, open under.
And a gut shot?
No, just a gut shot, I think.
Yeah, it was just a gut shot, I think, no.
Wasn't the board two, four, eight, and we had five, six?
Yeah, so three or seven.
Yeah, so any three, any seven?
Yeah, open under. But no hearts. Take that. Wow, nothing. No, kind of.
Uh, for him, that's a massive bet.
I thought we were talking about the flop, like, the flop bet. Yeah, this is fine to fold, I think. Damn, yes. Damn.
Oh, my.
Oh, nice, just call.
Big smooth check on the flop. Oh, you. You got it. You had it. Why would you leave jam turn?
Wait, what did I say? Oh, your big bets on turns are just the nuts.
I love the instant, I love the instant revolts you got when you jammed into him.
Yeah, yeah, like how everybody disagreed. I love it.
He's always the nuts.
Always the nuts.
Like, I have ace stand holding here.
Yeah, yeah.
And he was probably gonna jam, just be like, oh, I got him. It's like he just wanted the heads up to be longer. I wish you had lost after that hand.
I'm just angry now. To Nick, listen to Nick. I wish you had lost.
That's terrible.
No, no, just after that hand. Because of that one hand, I wish you had lost.
Uh-oh, you know what they say?
All right. No, it doesn't matter. I have the.
This is gonna lose us.
No, they, they say nine, they say nines are just fine, right? Or is that how, is that how it goes?
They say pocket deuce never lose, but they also say nine, 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 nine. So that's how it goes.
Yeah, nine's just the GG nuts, I guess.
Yeah. And this, my friends, is how you become a GG master. I'm sorry.
They give you a free, uh, room too?
No, they don't give me a free room. They gave me platinum lounge access at the Paris, Las Vegas, whatever that means.
You can go, you can have yourself a nice little cosmopolitan, pinkies up.
Let's go. So you get to go to VIP, uh.
He'll be in there with Negranu.
You can get like an escort for eight hundred dollars an hour.
Ooh. Cut the recording. What, what, what did you?
The recording now.
What's the fifteen hundred?
Thanks a lot for watching, everybody. If you don't, make sure to follow us on YouTube. Make sure to join our Discord. Get in the community. Come study with us.
Twitter.
See you guys around.